I'd like to call this Celine City Council Meeting to order if you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, councilmembers Girbaugh, Rhodes, Roth, Tahar, and Dillon. Ms. Tsibo Koenig will be absent this evening. From city staff, we have city manager Campow, clerk Royal, city treasurer Bennett, police chief Rennick, city superintendent engineer Rubel, Parks and Rec director Scruggs, and for the rest of you who are present this evening, if you'd please sign in in the back to my left, we would appreciate that. You do have two supplementals that were provided by the clerk's office. I believe she also emailed these to you all in advance of tonight's meeting. One is related to the fee book. It's a memo from Jeff Fordice dated the 3rd of April 2015, and the second is a copy of the resolution, which is also on the agenda this evening, I believe as a new business action item. Okay? Did anybody not receive those two documents? No? Okay, very good. Then at this time, the chair would seek a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
Move to approve as submitted.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Dillon. Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the agenda is approved as submitted. At this time, the chair would seek a motion to excuse the absence of city councilwoman Teri Tsibo Koenig.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh, and I'll let Ms...
Second.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Tahar be the second. So it was moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Tahar, to excuse the absence of councilwoman Tsibo Koenig. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We have two presentations this evening, the first of which is the 2014 Parks Commission yearly report, and I believe the chairperson, Mr. Neil Mormon, will be presenting. When the screen is loaded and your PowerPoint is up, the floor is yours, my friend.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the councilwoman mayor for allowing us to come in and present this evening, wrap-up of our 2014 activities.
That just illustrates the degree of fun and excitement that we had at Parks.
Well, that's not what it looks like here.
Again, thank you, everyone, for allowing us to come in and recap our 2014 year. Our committee is consisting of myself, Neil Mormon, the chairman, Sheila Burgoyne, our vice chair, committee members Amy Armstrong, Elena Hess, Greg Hohenberger, Jim Peters, and John Phillips. City councilmember David Rhodes is our representative, with Jody Roberts as our secretary, and Carlos Scruggs as our staff liaison. Some of the things we worked on this year, number one was partnering with established community groups to put on various events. One of the most noteworthy is our annual Mastodon Mayhem Challenge. It's sort of a mud run obstacle course run that we put on in conjunction with the Celtic Festival. We've worked with Celine Main Street, we've worked with the Celtic Festival as well, and we've also worked with a local group known as Workout One to help organize the event, stage it, and then produce the event as we planned. The second thing that we put a lot of effort into every year is our Green Thumb Award. In 2014, we had approximately 29 so nominations. We had several winners in the business category. We chose the Celine Senior Center. And residential, we had three winners, Marla De Vries, Mike and Rebecca Goddack, and Nancy Rogers. Every year, we put on this function where community members can submit their neighbors, their friends, or themselves, or business, based on the appearance of their home, their yard, their landscape, sort of beautify the city and make it a better place. This year, we'll be selecting nominations in the months of June, July, and August timeframe, with the winners announced around September. Next is a new event as of last year, Bark in the Park. This year, we'll be repeating the event June 5th, which happens to also be the first night of Movie in the Park series this summer. The Bark in the Park allows us to bring, have dog owners come out, utilize the dog park and the obstacle course, to do some agility training, and show off what their dogs can do. Next is one of our bigger upcoming projects, which is our annual park cleanup. Once a year, we partner with DPW. We select one park, and we put a lot of effort into cleaning it up, beautifying it, and just taking care of some little maintenance things. We rely heavily on community involvement, and this year's event will be May 9th at Curtis Park at 9:00 a.m.
Every year, the Celine Parks Commission takes a park cleanup.
Saturday, May 9th, to help us clean up Curtis Park. And where's Curtis Park?
Curtis Park is located on Michigan Avenue between the cemetery and the building, across from the building. What time do you ask?
9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
Three hours, that's it.
Who can help? Anybody can help. It's a great way to get your community service. It's great for families.
Sport teams.
Owners society.
Garden clubs.
Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts. Churches.
How about any group of friends who just wants to have fun?
Or any other group looking to fill community service hours.
So you might be asking, what the heck should you wear to this thing? Well, don't sweat it, it's not a big deal.
Wear some work boots, work clothes, anything you don't mind getting dirty. It gets a little wet down by the river. What kind of work will you be doing? You'll be trimming trees, planting flowers, cleaning up flower beds, spreading some safety surfaces around some place structures, and lots of other fun and exciting things.
So why do we have a cleanup day in Celine? Well, you know, the bottom line is, we're trying to give back to the community.
You get to meet some of your great neighbors in the community, you get to help clean up one of Celine's biggest parks. Lots of good people come out and help out.
And Curtis Park hosts so many different things for the community.
Do we mention that there would be coffee news?
Benny's Prunsels and Donuts.
We take care of our volunteers.
So come on down and join us again next May 9th from 9 to noon at Curtis Park.
We'll see you Saturday, May 9th.
So that was actually a video that we did recently with the help of Chase from SCTN to put that together and promote the event coming up. So with that, I conclude and say thank you for your time and your support throughout the year, and look forward to a successful 2015. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Neil. Are there any questions for our Parks Commission chair? No? Well, Mr. Rhodes, please.
No questions, just a comment. I've only been council liaison this year for just a few months now to Parks Commission, but it's been a pleasure to work with all of them. They're a very passionate group, energetic, and willing to get their hands dirty out in the park. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Neil, we appreciate your leadership and your time this evening. I guess the one thing that I would ask, and I'm actually looking for confirmation on this, I believe you still have one vacancy on the Parks Commission. So for anybody in the audience, anybody who will be watching this at home, or for anyone on the dais, if you know of a quality individual who's willing to give their time and talent and help promote and enhance our parks, I hope you encourage them to contact either myself or the city clerk and get in an application.
Yes.
Wonderful. If that's it? Neil, appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you kindly. So next up, we have a presentation on Proposal One, and we're very fortunate to have Representative Adam Zemke representing the 55th State House District with us this evening. In full disclosure, as all of you know, I am an employee of Representative Zemke, and he is not the representative of the city of Celine, but he has worked tirelessly on this particular issue and has presented to a number of groups and organizations. And because of his knowledge and enthusiasm, I thought it was appropriate to have him here tonight to talk about Proposal One, how it came about, and to address any questions and concerns you may have. So Representative Zemke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And councilmembers, I really appreciate you giving me the time to come and talk with you about this issue. It's a very important issue for all of our residents in Celine around the state who have the opportunity to vote on it on May 5th. In full disclosure, I created this presentation in my own time, not utilizing any state resources. And I say that because I am here advocating that you support Proposal One with your, any of the available opportunities that you have. I voted for the legislation that we passed in the legislature that enabled the ballot proposal to happen. I'm strongly supportive of its efforts, and I think it's a good solution to solve our very much crumbling infrastructure problems. So I'm going to talk with you a little bit about why that is, and I'm going to do it in a variety of ways. First, kind of frame what the problem looks like. So, give you kind of some of the low points of where we're at in our infrastructure. Across the state, we have 27% of bridges that are in, that need repair, improvement, or replacement. And in our municipalities, particularly in our cities, 48% of roads are in poor or mediocre condition. I think we can attest to the quality of some of our roads here in Washtenaw County, and I can tell you that since I first started becoming involved in local government in 2010, there were a number, I think over a dozen or close to a dozen bridges that needed repair, just in the western portion of Washtenaw County alone. So this is a serious problem, this is nothing new. The cost of crashes, this is accidents, medical costs, productivity costs, workplace costs, travel delays, insurance, and legal costs for residents, the total across the state for this, just this issue, is $8.1 billion a year. That's a serious financial impact. What does that amount to? About $357 per driver. And I want to, I want to frame this last point here. Roadway conditions are a significant factor, meaning they're, they influence the outcome of approximately one-third of traffic fatalities, not just accidents, fatalities. That's a serious issue. And these are things that can be taken from a study that the Michigan Department of Transportation participated in, it's a nationwide study. I'm happy to provide you with the links to that after the presentation's over with. So how do we get there? So there's a lot of blame to go around as to why we're in the position we're in, and it is, like most large problems, it is not one significant factor. It's brutal winters. We have a rapid freeze thaw cycle in Michigan that we know about. Because of our lack of investment and lack of annual revenue source, we have had a, not a very good approach to repairing roads. We're not, we've not done the right thing because we don't have the revenue to support doing the right thing. We have the highest commercial vehicle weight limits in the country, and, I apologize, my Twitter is blowing up, apparently somebody here is tweeting about this. We also have a significant lack of investment, bottom line. Really, what does that mean? I realize this is a little hard to see here, so I'll explain it. On the far left, we have Minnesota, per person, they invest $315. Illinois, $235. Ohio, $235. Wisconsin, $231. Indiana, $187. And Michigan, on the far right, $174 per person. Notice these are all surrounding Great Lakes states and Midwest states, and as a result of that, they have very similar climates. And the bottom line is that we have, this speaks to that last point, we have not been investing where we need to, and that's our infrastructure system. So, let's say we do nothing, no changes. You could see the downward trend of all of these things. We'll center our national, statewide, regional, and local infrastructure systems, they are just going to continue to degrade. There is no leveling off point on this, it just continues to go down. So the cost of doing nothing, increasingly dangerous conditions, and, as with any investment, preventative maintenance is always a cost saver. We are not able to do preventative maintenance right now with our current revenue stream, and so you have massive long-term costs. This cost is just going to get bigger. Or, we have Proposal One, which is the option in front of us right now. This is a very brief summary, and I'm going to explain what all these points are here because I think you have a right to understand in detail what they mean. Fixes Michigan's crumbling roads, it holds harmless, and even generates a little bit more revenue for public schools and local governments, and it provides tax relief to low-income residents because it does it in a way that is a regressive tax structure, it's a sales tax increase. And so, we want to make sure that our, some of our families who are especially of low income are not, are protected, basically, and there's a component to this that enables us to do that. So, what it does, generates $1.3 billion in new revenue for our transportation fund. It's a constitutionally protected fund, meaning that the legislature cannot shift the money around and put it elsewhere. Generates $300 million more for the school aid fund, which is another constitutionally protected fund, meaning that we can't shift it around and put it elsewhere. And it generates $94 million more for local governments. So what is it going to do? Really, this is where the rubber meets the road, if you will. Right now is the top portion, or the black portion is what we can do right now under our current revenue streams. 1,079 miles of reconstruction, 2,900 miles of rehabilitation. Under Proposal One, you could see those numbers of reconstruction over double, and in both categories, rehabilitation double as well. Why is it so complicated? That is the number-one question. I've done this presentation nearly a dozen times already. People are confused about this, more so than most ballot proposals, which are inherently confusing. And it's really because the current law is very confusing and complicated. And so, in order to provide a simple solution, I realize this is, this is going to sound very strange, in order to provide a simple solution, you have to have a complicated part of the equation to solve the complicated part we have right now. So, under the current law, when you purchase gas or diesel fuel, there are two buckets that you pay into. This is right now, today, nothing to do with Proposal One. You have a fuel tax of 19 cents per gallon, or 15 cents per gallon, sorry, 19 cents per gallon on gas, or 15 cents per gallon on diesel, and then you have a sales tax component on that, 6%. Now, that bucket on the left there is a flat tax. It has not been increased since, I think, 1998 was the last time, but yet, we've seen cost of labor and cost of materials increase when roads are being rebuilt and rehabilitated. So you have essentially a flat stream of revenue right there. You also have a sales tax, which is indexing, but there's a problem with this, and that is that the majority of that sales tax doesn't go to fixing our infrastructure system. And so, only about 15% of it does. The balance goes to things that I think are important, local government and schools, but that means that we have a problem with our stream of revenue off of gas. And so, this is where Proposal One creates, is complicated in order to provide a simple solution. What it does, well, here's the, I'll go onto this here. Fuel tax being flat while costs rise, that's a continued problem. Current sales tax structure on fuel rises with inflation, but dedicates very little revenue to road maintenance and repair. So, question, why didn't we just raise the gas tax? That was a proposal set before the legislature. It was passed in the Senate, and I'll be very honest with you, it had a number of us that were willing to support it in the House. It didn't pass because there weren't enough votes. You had 56 votes in the House, 20 votes in the Senate, and one gubernatorial signature in order to pack, to put something from bill form into law form, and there were not 56 votes in the House. And that's where the problem came into play. So, that proposal would have done it, wouldn't have required a ballot proposal, but I'll tell you, there's one thing that that proposal would not do, that Proposal One does. I've been asked more times than I can count, why is it that my money that I spend on vehicle registrations and on fuel doesn't go to the transportation infrastructure? All of the revenue should be dedicated from those two things, which are arguably transportation-generating revenue sources, or revenue generating sources. It should go to fund our transportation infrastructure. And if that were the case, if all of it did, then we wouldn't have the problem that we have right now. But, because, as you saw in that previous pie chart, it does not, in fact, the majority of it does not, we have a problem. So, Proposal One seeks to do that. It seeks to dedicate and constitutionally protect all of the revenue that is of a transportation nature. So your vehicle registrations and your fuel taxation, and put it towards your infrastructure fund, and constitutionally protect that fund. So, basically, here's what we're looking at doing. In total, that $1.3 billion is $1.2 billion for roads, bridges repair, and bridges, and then $100 million for mass transit. That goes through something called the Act 51 formula, was established in 1951. It's the structure by, by way transportation funding is disseminated between the Michigan Department of Transportation, the county road commissions, and local governments. And so, there's not been a change proposed in this fund, and there's not been a successful change to that structure since 1951. So, what we're talking about is this new dedicated fuel tax. That's where a significant amount of this revenue comes into play. Then you have a change in registration fees. Right now, on new vehicles, we're talking about, I want you to look at that, cars and electric cars. On new vehicles, let's say you go out and you purchase a $30,000 Jeep Grand Cherokee. I don't know if that's what a Jeep Grand Cherokee costs these days, but let's say, as a hypothetical, $30,000 for a new Jeep Grand Cherokee. You go and register that Grand Cherokee with the Secretary of State, and you're going to pay approximately $153 for that first year registration, vehicle registration fee. It's going to then depreciate for the next four years and flatten out, down to $111. What we're talking about in this change in cars and electric car vehicle registrations, it eliminates that depreciation. So you could say that's effectively an increase it is, but it's one of those things where if you go on year two or three, you're just not going to see that depreciation. It's not going to go above that $153, it's just going to stay flat. The one difference to that is that if you purchase a new electric car, and there's going to be a slight upcharge, and it's going to be a $25 fee. It's not going to be a $25 fee new every year, it's just going to be a $25 fee. And so, the big area of change when it comes to vehicle registrations is in the commercial vehicle sector. And I'll tell you, part of that reason that electric cars are handled a little bit differently is we're doing some really innovative things with hybrid vehicle technology on the west side of the state in commercial vehicles. Commercial vehicles do the majority of the damage to our roads. It's a simple fact because they weigh more, on average. And we wouldn't want heavyweight commercial vehicles with hybrid technology getting a break on the registration fee increases. So that's part of the reason that that second category, that mil category is there as well. But the big bulk of the registration fee increases come in the commercial vehicle sector. And really, that is because right now, there's a significant gap. The majority of passenger cars are paying rates that, in terms of their damage to the roads, are very high versus the amount of damage that heavier weight vehicle does. I'll put my engineering hat on for a second, and really, when you look at weight versus degradation to roads, it's an exponential function. It's not a linear function. So, a very heavy weight vehicle is going to do exponentially greater damage to roads than passenger cars. It's going to take several thousand passenger cars, in fact, to do the same amount of damage. But our vehicle registration fees are not reflecting that, and so that's why, under Proposal One, you would have these changes. So, the other thing I hear about, other than dedicate all of our revenue, our transportation-related revenue to road repair and the transportation fund, is that the legislature is just going to take that money and shift it around. And what I'm here to tell you is that, under Proposal One, that can't happen. These are constitutionally protected, so you would have to change the constitution, I guess. I will put that disclaimer in. If you wanted to change the constitution, if you could get the votes to do that, to undedicate the revenue, then that is a possibility, but I think that the likelihood of that is very, very, very slim. And, so this money would be funneled right into that transportation fund, and as a result of that, you would have significantly more revenue, $1.3 billion more annually. The reason that we're looking at a sales tax change is, if you look back at that, remember that pie chart I showed you that was multicolored? Showed that only 15% of the revenue went to the transportation fund, 75% went to schools, and 10% to local governments. We have to replace that revenue. We're dedicating all of this, essentially those two pie charts, to the transportation fund. We've got to figure out a way to backfill the sales tax losses to schools and local governments. That's where Proposal One comes into play, because it's a sales tax increase. So we're essentially taking the money out of one bucket, we're putting it in a constitutionally-protected other bucket, and then we've got to refill that, that bucket that we took from originally. So, this is what the sales tax goes to. It refills the school bucket to the tune of $1 billion, which is what would be taken, and it adds 300 million more for local governments. It refills that bucket, and it adds $94 million. And then, because it is inherently a regressive tax structure, sales taxes, it's going to hit those or take a larger percentage of the income of those who make less, we increase the earned income tax credit, which literally is a tax credit for the working poor. That is the best way to describe it. It was previously allowed to be claimed at 20% of the income. Under the tax shift, when the current governor came into office in 2011, that 20% went down to 6%. And so, we're talking about increasing that back up to 20%, it's a 14% increase. So, what does this cost? On average, according to nonpartisan House fiscal analysis, it will cost the average family $195 per household annually. That's the cost of Proposal One per household. With EITC, at 20%, recipients will be able to claim $333 per household a year. So, simple math is $138 more per household. So, it's still a regressive tax structure, but we're putting in a step to ensure that it's not hitting those folks who are making the least amount of income. So, in summary, because I realize this is a lot, Proposal One, if it passes, generates 1.3 million, or 1.3 billion, rather, more annually for the constitutionally-protected transportation fund. It backfills those buckets in school, in the school aid fund, and to local governments, to the tune of 300 million and 94 million, respectively, and it adds in this earned income tax credit to offset the cost in a sales tax, in a rising sales tax on working poor families. So ask yourself, do you want to dedicate all the money that you spend taxation-wise on your car, registrations, gas or diesel fuel tax? You want all that money to go to a constitutionally-protected fund for transportation? If you want that, that's what I hear from most residents, the answer is yes, Proposal One does that. Do I, do you want schools to have some more revenue? Do you want that to be constitutionally-protected? Do you want local governments to have some more revenue? If so, then Proposal One does that. Are you tired of legislators saying, "We're just going to raise more money into the general fund," and then it not getting to where you think it needs to go? If the answer is yes, Proposal One does that. It's generating more revenue for constitutionally-protected sources. It's dedicated. That's the right thing to do, that's what residents continue to ask for, and so I would encourage you all to vote yes on May 5th, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you have, because I realize this is a very complicated proposal.
Well, thank you, Representative Zemke. It's very thorough. One quick question before I open it up to the group, and I know you have heard this, and probably everyone at the dais has heard this from the people we represent. The state has a multi-billion dollar budget, tens upon tens of millions of dollars in the general fund alone.
Yep.
Why can't you just work on some reforms and some consolidations and some cost savings, cost-saving measures to generate the kind of funds needed for our roads? Do you want to address that and debunk that myth, if you will?
I would absolutely like to address that, and I appreciate the question, because this is a very common and respectful question as well. I sit, I stand here as a member of the Appropriations Committee, too. I've sat on the Appropriations Committee for over two years now, looking at various department budgets, and the state has a 53, just about $53.2 billion that it collects in taxation every year. That's a lot of money. In the general fund, there's only about $10 billion. So, the rest of it are those constitutionally-protected funds, or dedicated funds that we can't touch to do things like this. We could not shift the money out of other areas outside of the general fund to road repair. It just could not happen. And so, when you're talking about the need to generate $1.2, $1.5 billion more, that's 10, 15% of the 10, 15% of the general fund. You can't find that type of cost savings without some significant cuts in services. It's not there in waste. You're going to find waste maybe in the tens of thousands, you know, and collectively in maybe the low hundreds of thousands, not in the millions or billions that you need in order to generate these. It's just not there. You're talking about 10 to 15% of the general fund revenue, just in additional revenue for this proposal alone. That's what you would need. It's just not there.
Thank you. I appreciate your answer on that question. Are there other questions for Representative Zemke? Mayor Protam Rhodes?
Two, if I could.
Yes.
The first one is, if this proposal passes, when does it go into effect?
So when we voted on the time of this legislation back in December, the governor had secured the ability to bond to start road repair within two weeks after the ballot measure. So that's when the repair would start. It phases in. And the reason that we are bonding is because of that phase in. You're talking about over a three-year period, it's going to generate that $1.3 billion. So I don't think residents would accept the fact that they're going to be immediately spending more on a sales tax increase without having their road repair done starting right away. I think that's a very justifiable expectation, and the only way to do that is to do the bonding mechanism that the governor has secured. So that's the answer to your first question.
Thank you. The second question is on the earned income tax credit. Is that a tax credit that also phases in to get to the 20%? Or is that an immediate?
No, that's an immediate 20%. That's an immediate increase.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Gierba?
Just a couple. Just some clarification. Although you said that this money will be constitutionally protected, so that goes for the issues, it doesn't prevent the government or the state legislature from reducing funding that already currently is in the general fund and moving it into other areas, correct?
That is true. That is true.
So they could offset by this amount of money that's just been approved?
You could offset it, but there's actually not, even if you look at the school aid fund, so the lower of the constitutionally protected funds in terms of the revenue increases, there's not $300 million of general fund dollars into the school aid fund. And so you would have to, or school aid budget, rather, sorry. You would have to, you could take out all that general fund, and you would still have an increase into the school aid budget.
But it still wouldn't be a supplement to the degree of what you're saying, $300 million?
It wouldn't be $300 million. It would be less. It would probably be in the neighborhood of right around $150 million. But I would argue that the reason for constitutionally protected funds is so that you don't have to have a reliance on general fund revenues, because you don't want to have to worry about that general fund balance affecting things that you care about necessarily a lot less. So ideally, it's to our benefit to constitutionally protect as much funding as possible.
Oh, I agree. I think if they were to propose it this way, with that into it, that probably would make it even more sellable. The other one, as we always keep hearing about the tax credits, and like $10 billion of the tax credits, how will those be funded? Because those can only be funded through revenue from the general fund, so I'm expecting either a high increase of additional revenue coming in, which that doesn't seem to be the case, or they're going to be shifting more funds again, and where would those come from?
Right. So the tax credits are actually pretty well accounted for under the current proposed fiscal year '16 budget. So the fiscal year '16 budget that we just passed out of subcommittee this past, or a week ago, in fact, does not take into account any increases that proposal one may provide. So the current revenue that the state is taking in from taxpayers takes into account those mega credits that you're referring to. And so proposal one would be over and above all of that. The numbers that I gave you are over and above what the state's budget is right now, accounting for those tax credits.
And then just curiosity, when you talked about the commercial vehicles and how much percentage of the additional revenue is associated with that fee increase to those commercial vehicles? Is it 10 million, 300 million?
That's a very good question. It's in the neighborhood of 300 to 400 million. I can get you the exact answer, but I don't have it offhand.
I just want to make sure it's that significant.
Yeah, it's very significant. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Gierba? No, not at this point. Anything else for Representative Zemke? No, Representative. Again, we appreciate your time very much. Thank you kindly.
Thank you for the time.
Okay, moving on on the agenda this evening, my friends, we come to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? There are no citizen comments, then we'll proceed to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as submitted?
Thank you, Ms. Taha. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Roth. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 15-60. This is the community event, Celine Fair Parade. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 30, 2015 memo from City Clerk Royal, and to approve or not to approve the Celine Fair Parade route associated road closures and traffic control measures. Is there a motion?
Move to acknowledge receipt and to approve.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Rhodes, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Seconded, thank you, Mr. Roth. I'll get you on the next one, Ms. Dillon. Would you like to care to comment at all, Ms. Royal, or should we invite some of our friends from the Celine Fair Association or from Celine Fair Board up to make comment? Okay? We have a rather large contingent here. We'd welcome you to the podium if you'd like to make any comment.
Hello, my name is Leslie Drake. I'm at 5890 West Waters Road. I am the committee chair for the Celine Fair Parade this year. Couple of years ago, we discontinued having it uptown due to lack of attendance and funds and volunteer efforts. We had a year where there wasn't anything, and then we did a couple of years in the parking lot. That seemed to be okay, but we had requests from city council and uptown businesses that wanted to see it brought back. So we entertained that notion, had a couple of meetings with the mayor and some other council members. It is not going to be on 12, just because once you release that, it's very hard to get it back. And based on construction that's going to happen next year, it didn't make sense to do it for one year and then not be able to do it the next year. So based on our brainstorming, we came up with starting at Hennifield and going west to Bennett Street. So we feel that that's a great area for people to stand and watch. We will end up in Milpon Park and hopefully do some kind of mini carnival to get the public excited about the fair, which starts the next day. In past history, the Celine Fair Parade has been at the end of the fair, which was always a dilemma. So this year, it is actually the day before the fair starts, so that we can get the most bang out of letting the people know when and where, and come join us and join our fun.
Good. Excellent. Appreciate that. Are there any questions for our applicant? Mayor Protam Rhodes?
Two things. One is, first, I wanted to acknowledge the Fair Board's ability to relook at their processes and how they do things, and willingness to step out and do something different. And the second thing is, I'd like to encourage you to work with the police department, police chief, and DPW to see what could be done to reduce those potential costs coming from the city, much as the Cancer 5K run did, where they were able to have a significant reduction in the costs of city fees by coming up with volunteers and doing whatever else you can. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Any additional questions? Comments? Mr. Taha, please.
Yes, on the topic of fees, I was actually intending to comment that I appreciated the fact that the costs, the fees that they're asking to waive were under the amount that we estimated and approved last year. So, well done.
Anything further? Well, let me just add, it was a pleasure to sit down with you, I think, a couple months ago, to discuss some alternate routes, and I think you picked a winner. I think it's great that it's at the beginning of the fair and not at the end. I think you picked a great spot to start from and a great spot to end, and I look forward to hopefully working with you to offer some amenities to folks at the end of the parade that they'll really enjoy and get them thinking about the Celine Community Fair. The fair is important. It celebrates our agricultural heritage, which we are more and more detached from today in 2015, but that makes that heritage and that history no less profound. So I think that the fair is vitally important. You've done a lot of things in recent years to improve your viability and to make it more attractive. I hope that continues to be successful for you, and we're glad that at least a component or part of the fair is back in the Celine community. So I appreciate that, and like the mover and securer, I'm very enthusiastic about this motion, and will be supporting it. Anything else? Any comments from staff? No? Okay. Any further discussion? Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Roth, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for your time this evening. We appreciate it. We move on to new business item 15-61. This is final payment for Phase 1 wastewater treatment plant rehab. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 2015 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Ruble, and to approve or not to approve pay request number nine, final in the amount of $128,658.39 as submitted. Is there a motion?
Move to acknowledge receipt and approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Dillon. Mr. Ruble and Mr. Ruble, do you both care to make comment this evening? And I know we have our superintendent, Mr. Skoll, here. Bob, I don't know if you have any comment?
Can you give any questions?
All righty. We'll start it off with Gary Ruble, and then if Brian Ruble has any comments, we welcome those. Mr. Ruble?
Well, I can certainly testify that staff, that would include the city manager, myself, and Bob Skoll, worked diligently with Tetra Tech to resolve all the issues with the change order number two, as you see there, the final change order, and then also working on the allowances that were to be paid out. And Tetra Tech worked diligently and spent a lot of extra time with the communications with the contractor, FHC. And we finally did achieve the goal of closing out the project, addressing all the change order items in the best interest of the city and of the project. In the packet, you'll see there's just my cover memo, which is a summary of past payments, the change order, and then the final payment. As I show here, the final payment is a sum of some figures that come to $128,000, that being the $6,700 in the final change order, some of the number of items that are increases and decreases, that's the balance change order. The allowance payout of $25,000, there was an initial one-half payoff of $25,000. Digestion cleaning payout of $32,000, that was within the allowance, that was within the bounds of the contract documents already as a pay item. And then the retainer of $64,000 that we hold until we're sufficiently satisfied that we have the warranties and completion of all items. Mr. Skoll submitted a memo also attaching to the operational aspects of it and the last final repair to the chiller. Then, of course, the Tetra Tech memo drafted by Mr. Brian Ruble, and explaining to council that they completed the closeout review, and at this point, recommend payment of the final request by the contractor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruble. Do you care to make any comment?
I have nothing more to add. I'll be here for questions.
Excellent. Okay. What questions do we have? We'll start with Councilmember Roth.
The initial contract was for $1,276,000. The final thing on the payment for the contract was $1,303,227.79, meaning an increase of What did we get for that additional cost, and why was such a deviation made?
Yeah, I'm sorry. The increase was $27,000. Maybe I misunderstood you, but I thought I heard you say $120,000.
I stand to be corrected.
Okay. $27,000 increase. There were roughly 16 or 17 changes that occurred on the project. Five or six of them were deducts, that is, things that were removed from the project or done more efficiently. And the balance, then, were small changes that were made to the project through its duration to make something work better, or we found some differing conditions in the field. So the net change was $27,000.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Roth. Additional questions? Mr. Gierba?
Since we've had all this work done, and I see there was another concern in terms of the chiller not being prepared correctly, so that the pipes froze, knowing that we're moving into another stage of work down there, how highly likely it is that we would have this company come back and work for us?
I think the work was fairly well done, actually. It was their paperwork and loose ends, tying up loose ends, that were probably the biggest challenge.
Isn't this a company that released the sludge into the river?
They did misoperate a valve which caused a spill into the river. So clearly, that would be your decision to bring them back. They did attend the pre-bid meeting, so I think they will be on one of the bidding teams, but there would be a decision to be made if they were the little bidder, yes.
Just from the concern, when you said that you spent many hours working with them to get things resolved, that's my concern that, and I don't know how that cost plays into this, did we end up paying additional fees to your company as a result of having to work with this company?
Thus far, we absorbed all those costs. We did not pass on any of our extra effort onto the city.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Gierba. Any further questions? Gentlemen, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any additional discussion? No? Okay. It's been properly moved by Mayor Protam Rhodes, seconded by Councilwoman Dillon, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 15-62. This is 2015 fee book revisions. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 30, 2015 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Ruble regarding fee book revisions, and to approve or not to approve the revisions to the city's 2015 fee book as recommended. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll add acknowledge receipt as well, Mr. Rhodes. It's been properly moved by Mr. Rhodes to acknowledge receipt and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Taha. Mr. Ruble, do you care to make any comment this evening, sir, before we open it up for
Thank you, Mayor. I believe you have a revised memo from the DPW regarding some changes in the fee schedule due to a more recent change in the way the fringe benefits are determined and applied for DPW labor, labor and so forth. So it has some small changes in it, as shown on there, not large changes, but just small changes. And Mr. Forde, who did an excellent job here doing the research and a number of spreadsheets to back all this up, is here in case you had any questions on any specific items, and he did a very thorough job. And then Mrs. Bennett, our treasurer, also worked with our plant, with Plant Moran, our auditors, and they were able to determine what fairness is involved with establishing the benefits, as stated in her memo of March 25, 2015. So she'd probably be better one to answer those questions.
Very good. Ms. Bennett or Mr. Forde, do you care to make any comment at all?
You know, the majority of the adjustments we made are based on the material costs and the rate changes, so that fringe benefit change, we get a lot of our theater.
Okay. No comment? Okay. Any questions for any member of city staff? Mayor Protam Rhodes?
Under the meter set fees, on that page, there's for the same size meter, the fees differ quite a bit, depending on whether it's a turbine meter or a disc meter. And I was, for my own benefit, wondering what the difference was between those two And I was, for my own benefit, wondering what the difference was between those two, and why wouldn't a person just automatically select the one that is a lot less expensive?
For most purposes, the less expensive one, um, works better. Uh, the turbine meter is for more of a high-flow situation, so a typical residence, um, would use the disc style, uh, that is good for detecting low flow rates on up to a moderate flow rate. Turbine is for more of a high-flow situation.
So is it your department then that determines which meter they're gonna be able to use?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Rhodes?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions for staff? No? Gentlemen, thank you. Ms. Bennett, thank you. Any subsequent discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Taha, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Move on to new business item 15-63. This is in-car computers, hardware and installation. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 31st, uh, 31st, yep, uh, 2015 memo from Police Chief Rennick, excuse me, and to approve or not to approve the purchase and installation of four in-car computers in the estimated amount of $14,870.29. Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt and to approve?
I shall move.
Thank you, Councilmember Roth. Is there a second?
Support.
Supported by Mayor Protem Rhodes. Thank you, gentlemen. Chief Rennick, do you care to make any comments, sir?
I'm just prepared to answer any questions if you have any from the memo. And memo basically describes, uh, our in-car computers are in very poor shape, and this is a method to replace those.
Any questions for Chief Rennick? Uh, Councilmember Roth?
What happens to the old? Is it just plainly scrapped, or is there anything to be salvaged?
Well, we, we wouldn't be able to salvage them. Um, there may be, um, agencies that are still continuing with those particular ones that we may be able to sell parts to, uh, but, uh, for the most part, they're almost useless, um, so they've probably electronically scrapped. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Mayor Protem Rhodes?
Mine relates to that same subject matter. Environmental Commission has annual e-waste events, and those particular items could be contributed to that, I think.
As a matter of fact, because they're flat screens, they can, yes. I know the, the CRTs can, but, but these are flat screens, so, yes, they would be able to be recycled.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything further?
Let me just say, I appreciate how quickly, um, this came together, because I've talked to you, I've talked to some of the officers, um, about how antiquated the current technology is and that, um, quite frankly, they deserve better and our citizens deserve better. Um, and it's a goal of mine, it's a goal of councils, to equip our, our public safety officials with the appropriate equipment, hardware and resources to do their jobs effectively. So I appreciate your, your work and your leadership on this, and looking forward to having the new equipment installed, because I think it will prove beneficial not only to our employees, but also ultimately to our citizens.
I agree. Thank you.
Anything further? No, then it's been properly moved by Roth, seconded by Rhodes, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 15-64. This is overband crack sealing major and local streets. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 25th memo from DPW foreman Bennett and to award or not to award the spring overband crack sealing project to Scolder, Scoldeler? Scodeller, excuse me, my faux pas. Um, construction in the approximate amount of $35,000 and to authorize or not authorize DPW foreman Bennett to execute acceptance of the proposal.
Move to award and authorize.
Thank you, Councilmember Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Dillon. Uh, Director Fordice, do you care to make any comments about this, sir?
This is, uh, just a continuation of our, uh, crack filling efforts. It's our primary asphalt preventive maintenance, uh, practice. Um, going out, cracks in the asphalt, fill them with sticky goo, water doesn't get down in there, and, uh, the road lasts longer. So it's a, a very cost-effective method, and, um, this, uh, company has extended their, um, competitively bid price from 2009 every year, so we're still paying 2009 prices for this work.
Scodeller?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Any questions for Director Fordice? No? Mr. Roth, did you have something? No? Okay. I saw something percolating, and I apologize. Any subsequent discussion? No, then we'll proceed to vote. Thank you, Mr. Fordice. All those in favor of the motion moved by Councilmember Gearbaugh, seconded by Dillon, to award and to authorize, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 15-65. This is Saline Historic Society request to install a train playset structure. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 31st, 2015 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel and to approve or not to approve the request to install a small playground style train playset at the Historic Depot Museum. Is there a motion?
Move to acknowledge receipt and to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Taha. I know that, Mr. Rubel, you were the one who prepared a memo. I don't know if you care to comment, and then I believe former councilmember Peters is here representing the Historic Society. Is that correct, sir? Why don't you come up as well, and if you care to make any comment, or in case there are any questions from the dais, you'll be, uh, available to address those. Mr. Rubel?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, there, uh, we do have an existing site plan for the depot, and from time to time, we, we do make amendments to it, and, uh, the most recent one, of course, was the Velocipede Shed, which, which was a scout project. It turned out very nice. And, uh, Mr. Peters and, uh, the Historic Society have proposed an equally nice, nice project, especially, uh, for the children, and that's the train, uh, playset. And, uh, he, uh, he probably has a depiction of it here, of what, of what it would look like. And, uh, you, you've probably seen these in parks throughout Michigan. Would you like me to pass this around, then?
Please. Start down by Mr. Gearbaugh, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah. In addition to the considerations, uh, in the memo on, on this for council, consideration to approve the installation of the playset, uh, I did talk to Mr. Peters today about a couple of related items, um, which you may have thought of also. Uh, one is that of the two alternatives, I think the preferred location is the one nearest, uh, the livery barn, because it's, it's closer to the depot building, and it's probably more accessible there, more centrally located for children's use than back, uh, in the far east corner that's a little harder or more difficult to, uh, uh, get to. Uh, so that's the preferred location, if you want to approve this as shown. Um, the other items that we briefly discussed, maintenance of the item, and, uh, Mr. Peters reminded me that the Historic Society has a lease to maintain the facility, and then that this likely would fall under the, the maintenance aspects of that, that lease agreement. So, um, any questions?
Very good. Let's start. Are there any questions for Mr. Rubel regarding his memorandum? No? Mr. Peters, do you care to make any comments, sir?
Uh, just simply to say that all good museums, there are certain number of components that takes to make a good museum, and one of those that we're lacking is that's things for kids to do, hands-on type things. We get, uh, young families up there with, with small kids, and they're only good for maybe 10, 15 minutes looking at displays, and they need to burn off some energy. So hopefully this will give them, uh, someplace to go and burn the energy off. It also keeps with our railroad, uh, theme of the depot, and also gives the depot, uh, a full week exposure to the public. In other words, the depot's only open on Saturdays, but with this PlayStation that close to the non-motorized trail, it sort of gives a train-themed depot connection to the public all week long.
Very good. Any questions for, uh, Mr. Rubel or applicant? No? Any discussion? Comments? Uh, start with, uh, Mayor Protem Rhodes, and then we'll move to Mr. Gearbaugh.
I just wanted to say that I, I strongly support the, uh, position of the playset shown closest to the livery barn. Um, it, it keeps everything a little bit more compact, and while the one to the far east, uh, appears just as visible, it, it really isn't when it's tucked off on the side there, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Gearbaugh?
Two things. I agree, the, where the location is and being talking with the board and everything, that it's seen better from the road, so that if any potential issues or things concern our police officers or so forth, it can see it. Um, since I'm a tre, I'm the treasurer for the society, I will be abstaining from voting on it, just to keep it clean.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Roth?
I just want to mention this, this problem, not going to cost the city anything, it's just the okay.
Right. We're not here asking for any money, just permission.
Right.
Anything further?
I just think this is great. Appreciate your leadership on this. I think it's a great addition to the, the depot site. It is essentially one of our parks, and I think it makes it, uh, a little bit more inclusive and inviting to, to people of all ages. So, good work on this. If there's nothing further, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion that's been moved by Rhodes, seconded by Taha, to acknowledge receipt and to approve, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And one abstention. Correct, Mr. Gearbaugh? Thank you, sir. The motion carries. We move on to new business item 14-238. This is state revolving fund resolution. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 1st, 2015 memo from Treasurer Bennett and to approve or not to approve the resolution for subsequent notice of intent to borrow in the amount of $400,000 for the construction of Phase Two of the wastewater treatment plant. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Can we add acknowledge receipt as well, Ms. Taha?
Oh, yes.
Thank you, ma'am. It's been moved by Ms. Taha to acknowledge receipt and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gearbaugh. Ms. Bennett, the floor is yours.
Okay, I'd like to start off by saying this is a precautionary measure only. As you may recall, in December, we, um, proposed a resolution to borrow 3.2 for the Phase Two of the water treatment plant. We have met with Tetra Tech and, um, with the, the final projected, you know, what they're anticipating the bids to come in at. Um, as I stated in my memo, we're at 3.267665. When we were preparing documentation to proceed with the, the process, our, um, legal counsel and bond counsel wanted to make sure that we were pretty firm on that number, because we were, 3.2 was the maximum in our resolution, and so that anything that came in over higher than that would have to come out of out-of-pocket. Now, Tetra Tech has advised us that we have $300,000 principal forgiveness from the state of Michigan, but we would have to bond the full cost. We've also been advised by bond counsel, legal counsel, and Tetra Tech that because of the economic pickup, bids are starting to come in a little higher, and I sort of started getting nervous and said, what if we don't have enough in the resolution to borrow against? We have to borrow the full amount of the project, and then the MDOT would give us that $300,000 forgiveness, but we have to have the resolution to borrow all of that. So this is a precautionary measure. Anything that, um, the, the bid would actually have to come to for approval, and then when we do the bond issuance, you know, how much we would fund is to be subject. But this is just a precautionary measure to, um, protect us so that we have the ability, should the bonds come in or something else unforeseen happen.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Bennett? About comments or discussion? Mr. Rhodes?
Not for Ms. Bennett. Thank you, ma'am.
Well?
Is this next phase of the wastewater treatment plant work going to eliminate the odor issues that come up from time to time, or at least reduce their frequency and, uh, quantity?
There is a component of the project to help Mr. Skull rehabilitate the existing odor control equipment that is there, but there is not any new containment, per se, uh, as part of the project. So hopefully with that repair, he'll be able to use that equipment more frequently and more efficiently.
What, what would it take to make sure that, that we did have that odor problem covered?
I, I have not been charged to study that odor problem in detail, so I, I can't give you a, a scientific explanation for that, but I have been asked to help repair that existing device, and that is part of the project.
If I may piggyback on that,
Yes.
Mr. Rubel, um, I, let me preface by saying I'm all in favor of providing additional resources to rehab the equipment that's already in, in our inventory to address odor control. Um, but I, I concur with Mr. Rhodes that at a minimum, this, this dais, this body should think about perhaps at least exploring some other alternatives, because we have been made aware, um, in, in very emphatic terms, that we have had some pretty profound issues of, of late. Um, and I'm not a resident of, of that particular vicinity.
Sure.
But if I was, I'd, I'd be alarmed and upset and, and be of the opinion that, at least to a certain extent, it, it shouldn't be tolerated, and that some steps, some aggressive and assertive steps should be taken to see what we can do to address that.
I'd be more than happy to meet with your staff and figure out a, a step in that direction.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Gearbaugh?
My question with the pollution aspect, or the odor aspect, is, um, it seemed to be working fine for a while until we started doing this renovation, and it really became more prevalent in the last, oh, I don't know, year or so. The concern is, if we go back to where we were, what I'm again concerned is, if we go into our next phase, how much worse will it be at that point? So it's really understanding just how much it is impacted by just the renovations and things that we're doing, because I don't know why all of a sudden it wasn't the last year it became worse, except for whatever the new company was doing and whatever construction was happening.
Yeah, I, I have talked to your staff a few times about that, and, you know, other than a few weeks perhaps during construction, nothing that was performed should have changed the odor, uh, coming from the plant. I, you know, what, perhaps maybe then it points to some other atmospheric type conditions, but as far as the operation of the plant, long-term, the Phase One project should not have changed the characteristics.
Why don't we proceed i- in this direction unless I hear objections? This seems perfectly appropriate and reasonable to have Mr. Rubel meet with some of our staff members to determine what else potentially could be done to rectify the odor issue. Is there any objection to having staff sit down with Mr. Rubel and/or his associates at Tetra Tech?
No? Okay.
You have me too.
Great. Appreciate that. Um, why don't you stay up here, just in case there are any other questions, Mr. Rubel? Um, is there anything further related to this motion? Mr. Roth, please.
When this part is completed, what else is there left to be done?
Yeah, your plant's quite old. Um, clearly there's, uh, you know, other improvements in the future. Uh, you know, there are some mechanisms that we are replacing in this project, but there are, are some mechanisms that have been in place for 20, 30 years and will continue to be in place. So at some point, some of that equipment will need to be replaced. You have pumping systems that are largely not being, uh, I don't know of any problem with them, but pumps just need to be replaced every 20, 25 years. Those are not being done as part of this project. So there's a fair amount of infrastructure that's still there, but I, I will, I do not know of any immediate needs that would take place after this project.
So this will be the last phase for some time?
I think that's very fair to say that, yes.
Well, we were brought out as consul several years ago and visit the site, and there are several things was pointed out, pretty much in the physical structure of the building itself and the grounds around it, and it appears both of these phases didn't address any of those particular issues. Where do we go from here? They have that it is a very up-to-date, respectable facility for our city.
Again, we could, we could lay out a, a Phase Three. We, we have just laid out the first, uh, five years roughly, that this, this is what this project was supposed to be. So at, at, I think your next step would be to look beyond that five-year cycle and develop a new plan.
Anything further, Mr. Roth?
Well, I was just wondering, I was hoping that within these phases we had, some of these issues would have been addressed.
Well, I, I, again, I don't know what all your concerns were. Many of them will be addressed, as I recall. Uh, we have some failing concrete that will be addressed. It will really make part of that site, uh, look quite a bit better aesthetically, and this Phase Two is pretty important. Uh, it will replace your filtering system, which is essentially the very last process before it discharges to the river, and that has been deteriorating, that performance of that system. So this, this will give you a great safeguard with meeting your, your permit obligations.
Will this last phase include changing where we receive subsidies from a, a third party?
Yeah, the, that, that whole complex is being replaced as part of this project. So that will extend you, the lifespan of that operation at your plant for, gosh, 20, 30 more years.
And will some of the equipment left behind from previous renovations and this current renovation be removed from the site?
This contract, uh, it was part of our study pl, phase to evaluate that, and there was unfortunately not a lot of extra funds to take care of those improvements, but I believe Mr. Skull has programmed that into his, his budget to get that done concurrently.
He has.
Thank you.
And let me just say, Councilmember Roth, I, I agree with you that, um, when we, when we took a tour of the facility, um, several years back, there were a number of, of deficiencies and issues that, that needed to be resolved, and needed to be resolved, uh, expeditiously. Uh, and like Mr. Rubel said, I think with the completion of Phase Two, most of those issues will be rectified. There will still be some lingering, um, issues and, and problems that will need to be addressed, and certainly council and, and staff along with other stakeholders will be talking about that in, in that in the coming years. So your point is very well taken, and certainly work will continue to rehab and modernize the facility in the years ahead.
If there's nothing further than Brian, appreciate your time this evening. We will proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Tahr, seconded by Gierbach to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item fifteen dash sixty-eight. This is resolution in support of Proposal One for Safer Roads. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the resolution in support of Proposal One for Safer Roads. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Tahr. Is there a second?
Support.
Support by Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes. Any comments, any discussion? Obviously, I don't want to belabor the point because we had a pretty thorough, all-encompassing presentation by Representative Zemke. I prepared this resolution several weeks ago. It's modeled, not identically, but very closely to sample language that we were provided by MML. It has been reviewed by our legal counsel, and I did actually, because she is quite the wordsmith, I did have Councilwoman Tahr take a look at it and offer some suggestions as well. So I'm very pleased with how it turned out. Let me just say this, a former employer, former boss of mine, State Representative Jeff Irwin, was talking about this issue on Off the Record on PBS probably about two or three weeks ago, and I think he summed it up appropriately where he said, you're going to pay either way. Do you want to pay a little bit more upfront for better roads, or do you want to pay when you're in a terrible accident on one of our state or local roads? Because if we don't start to infuse our inventory, our infrastructure systems with cash, those types of statistics are only going to escalate. And that was enumerated actually in Representative Zemke's PowerPoint. So this is far from a perfect proposal, but I deal with realities and numbers, and quite frankly, I think this is the best that we're going to get out of this particular legislature. So needless to say, I wouldn't have put it on the agenda if I wasn't in support of it, and I enthusiastically support this motion and hope that you will join me in voicing your support as well. Any additional comments? Ms. Tahr.
But perhaps a slightly more cynical take. I also support the resolution. My support for the proposal has not been a given, so I've been thinking about it a lot, and I think back to nineteen eighty-seven, when I moved back to Michigan from North Carolina, and in nineteen eighty-seven, I was appalled at the condition of the roads in the state, and they have not improved. And I believe we must take action, and I believe if we do not pass Proposal One, what comes next will be much, much, much worse. So I'm supporting it partly from that kind of cynical point of view.
Thank you, Ms. Tahr. Additional comments? No? You want to comment? Please, Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes.
I'm just going to say Representative Zemke's presentation here made me more aware of the cost of not doing anything, that eight point one billion dollars per year in the state as a result of the costs associated with bad roads, the accidents, crashes that occur, and all of those subsequent costs. That's pretty eye-opening. And, you know, to paraphrase Winston Churchill, this may not be the best written, but it's better than anything else that's out there, so I support it.
Thank you, sir. Any additional comments? Ms. Tahr, please.
Yeah, one other thing anecdotally. My husband and I purchased a new car in January, and for the first time in my life and/or my experience, it's a new car, the dealer offered us an insurance policy on our wheels and rims, which we purchased because of the bad conditions of the road in the state.
Thank you for that. I think.
Well, it's just as an indication of how bad it is.
It's anecdotal, but I think it's absolutely indicative. Yeah, appreciate you sharing that. Anything further? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Tahr, seconded by Rhodes, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Ayes have it, and the motion carries. We move on to new business item fifteen dash sixty-nine. This is Quantum Signal lease agreement. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April second, twenty fifteen memo from City Manager Campbell and to approve or not to approve the license agreement between the City of Celine and Quantum Signal for the use of city property as a product testing site and to authorize or not authorize Mayor Marl and Clerk Royal to sign the lease agreement. Is there a motion?
Move to approve and authorize.
Thank you, Mr. Gierbach. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Dillon. Mr. Campbell, do you care to comment at all?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And you summed it up pretty well, but Mitch Rhodes, the owner of Quantum Signal is here for any questions, but we were approached, Mitch approached staff, I think it was this past summer, looking, and they were working on some possible future projects that they were bidding on, and if they were able to win those contracts, that they would need some area to do some product testing. And I know in the past they've used like the high school parking lot and those types of things, and looking for something different, and these are some, I don't want to give away trade secrets or anything like that, so I, but you can...
Fancy robots.
There you go, fancy robots, testing. And as we looked at this potential sites, the three vacant parcels out at adjacent parcels, Sock Trail Business Park Lots Eighteen, Nineteen, and Twenty, and he'd say, hey, this would be a great location for what we need to test for. And so we, they submitted a request a few months ago, a couple months ago, and so we worked in drafting some agreement language with the City Attorney's Office, and what you have before you is what has been drafted. As far as it's, so it's an eighteen-month term and with a upfront cost, and so, but there's both, either party could, of course, discontinue the agreement if need be, and for instance, if we were to sell the property, then that, so then we would prorate and we would return the balance if it was less than eighteen months. But we think this is a way to certainly assist one of our better corporate citizens that we enjoy working with, so.
If there are no questions for the City Manager, Mitch, I'll turn it over to you, man.
Sure. You know, as most of you guys know, that I represent Quantum Signal. We develop a lot of products. We're up the street here. Some of our products are fancy robots, as I said, they're in autonomous vehicle technology. We, as part of moving downtown Celine, we're very excited to be downtown. Obviously, one of the challenges is the ability to test outdoor vehicles when you're in a downtown space. When it comes to things like autonomous vehicles that can be on-road, we were very happy to receive the first autonomous vehicle license plates last year, approximately a year ago this week, actually, from the state of Michigan. So if we want to test those things on-road, we can use actually the streets to do that. But when it comes to off-road robots, which is something that military robots and other things are very concerned about, you kind of need something that's more like a grassy field, something with some hills, that sort of thing. And so when we looked at this particular project we're working on and some other projects, we thought that perhaps it would be nice to, rather than try to drive far away from Celine and try to find other property, it would be nice to be right here in Celine up the block and try to do something on unused space. And as part of that, we thought it would be great to be able to, you know, put a little bit of money toward the City of Celine just to reimburse them for the cost of working with us on this thing, and to hopefully they can take, you guys can take that money and put it towards something useful. And so, you know, just here tonight to answer any questions about the project, or about the request here about the project to some extent, and I'm happy to answer anything you'd like.
Very good. Any questions for the applicant?
No? Glad we can be of service for you.
Thank you very much for hearing me out.
And next time when you're on the agenda, we'll put you at the beginning of new business so you don't have to stick around for an additional hour.
I don't mind at all, Brian. It's democracy at work, and it's a pleasure.
Okay, well, we appreciate that. Appreciate your leadership and like the City Manager said, for being a very valued and special corporate citizen. Thank you. Any subsequent discussion? No, then it's been properly moved by Gierbach, seconded by Dillon, to approve and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you again. We move on to discussion items. First up, we have Commission, Committee, and Task Force reports from council members. Anything, Mr. Rhodes?
On behalf of the Environmental Commission, I want to remind everybody of our electronic waste recycling event on Saturday, April twenty-five, here in the City Hall parking lot. Starts at nine o'clock in the morning and goes till three o'clock in the afternoon, and it was, as was mentioned earlier, unfortunately, we cannot accept cathode ray tube devices, the older televisions, and the older computer monitors. However, the county will be doing a cleanup event at DPW later on this year, and they will accept those kind of devices. It's a change that we had to make because of changing providers, vendors, with this recycling thing, and the vendors are not getting the subsidy that they used to get. The Environmental Commission is also working with the Parks Commission. We're going to try and develop some plantings down in the dog park to help control any runoff into the mill pond. And let's see, don't need to say anything else about parks, because that was all covered earlier this evening, and y'all remember that, right?
Indeed.
Okay. The schools are going to do a waste reduction special effort the week of April the twentieth and in the elementary schools, and so they have asked for volunteers to help with, during the lunch periods. So this is primarily food waste reduction that they're going to work on to start with. And then Pleasant Ridge on April twenty-fourth, I believe it is, is trying to totally eliminate any waste coming out of their building on that day.
Great.
All kinds. So they're to be applauded for their efforts. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes. Additional Commission, Committee, or Task Force reports. Ms. Tahr, please.
Thank you. The Arts and Culture Committee met today, and we are moving forward on two collaborations, one with the Historical Society and the other with Parks and Recreation that you'll be hearing about. This is, this goes along with one of our goals that we had set for ourselves was to find collaboration partners within the community, and that's working out very well.
Great, thank you. Additional, Mr. Roth, please.
This Sunday, the Celine Historical Society will have a speaker, excuse me, not this Sunday, it'll be next Sunday that we have, that's coming up this Sunday. Jim Peters will be making a presentation about our German heritage in this area, so he's going to share some information that probably many of us be of interest to it. It's free, it's going to be held in a bracket room at two o'clock next Sunday, or this coming Sunday at two P.M.
Very good. Anything else on Commission, Committee, or Task Force reports? Mr. Gierbach?
We were able to, Historic District Commission is able to fill one position with Ron Koenig, so he begins on our first meeting that's now being moved to the first Wednesday of the month, but we still have one position still open, so if anyone's still interested, please submit an application.
Very good. Anything further? How about reports or other announcements? Mr. Rhodes?
The Celine District Library on April the nineteenth, that's a Sunday at two o'clock in the afternoon, will have a formal dedication for their outdoor art work, the wild bird facility that's out there. It's quite lovely, and I believe they're going to have free ice cream also, so that might bring out some more young people. And the other thing I had was, I saw a notice today that the City of Celine has been selected as the eleventh best city in the state for young families, so it's another recognition for our fine community.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes. I have one announcement, I actually provided the material to the City Clerk, you can actually keep it in your file. I received a letter this past week from Leslie Neehammer, the Director of the Celine District Library, with a annual report and an annual audit. Obviously, it goes without saying, that's a very well-run organization. It's a great community resource. A lot of dedicated volunteers and staff members make that the exceptional facility it is. If you want to take a look at their financial information, she provided that to me and asked that I share it with the rest of my colleagues on council, so that will be in the Clerk's office if you're interested in taking a look at it. Are there any other reports or announcements? No, then we move on to city industrial property. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Campbell, but I would refer to a memo that you provided to us in our packet. I believe it's dated March the thirty-first.
Correct, yeah, Mr. ...
Mr. Rubel provided it, excuse me.
Correct, yep. As well, City Staff is a collaborative effort between the Assessor's Office, Engineering Department, and City Manager's Office to put this together, but City was approached a while ago, MMI, in the former ThyssenKrupp building there, just south of the rec center on Woodland. They're wanting to expand significantly, approximately fifty thousand square feet. However, with, because of the maximum lot coverage in our zoning ordinance, they would be exceeding the lot coverage tremendously, in which would require a potential variance. And of course, as we all know, variances aren't automatic by any stretch of imagination. So Staff, I think, came up with a very solid idea. There's about a one point zero three plus or minus acres, that's more or less, I guess, a buffer, but property that's not buildable, that's contiguous, and it's essentially, and as you can see on the layout that we provided, it's contiguous between, kind of the S curve there, as I call it, by the ballfields at Teff Park and where MMI is currently located. Again, that property is of no use to the city. It's not buildable, it's one point, so the thought would be to consider offering that, to sell that piece of property, a little over one acre or two, to them, which would, they would still exceed the maximum lot coverage, but only about five or six percent, which would be a much more palatable, I believe, variance request. So, but any case, so that's why I wanted to bring it up, to see if council was supportive of that, and of course, you know, what would be the value? The value that our assessor, as you can see from the memo from Catherine Scholar, City Assessor, the value at eleven thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars. And of course, it's greatly discounted because it is not buildable, so I believe it's seventy-five percent discount rate applied to that. So Staff is potentially wanting to see if council has an interest in moving forward to, for Staff to work with, actually, MMI actually leases that property, but with the owners of that property.
Let me open it up first to council members who have questions for Mr. Campbell or Mr. Rubel. Ms. Skoll, of course, is not here this evening, but I'm sure Mr. Campbell can address some questions on her behalf. Are there any questions for city staff regarding this issue? Mr. Gierbach?
And there was never any plan historically to have that as an access to any of that property, to the west of it? It just seems weird that we kept a narrow track like that, that almost looks like it's a potential road.
Yeah, I'm not...
Sell it with that property that was already there. I just was curious, if there was anything that was for future planning.
Do you want to address that, Mr. Rubel? Can you address that?
I think part of the reason is the fact that it's, I believe it's north of the section line itself, of the section of Pittsfield Township that was the Teff property, to the south is made to Industrial Park. And so this was a piece of property that actually lied between the remainder of what was set aside for Industrial Park and left over from the section to the north that we purchased from the Teff family also, and that became dedicated as recreation area. There was no plan on record with the Industrial Park plans or the plot plan for it to be a connector road going to the west.
So it really was just a boundary issue thing when we bought it, probably? Okay.
I think that's part of the problem. The other part was that underneath that piece of land, basically, there's a very wide easement for the underground BP oil or BP gas line, which takes jet fuel to fueled dispensary stations in metro area. So majority of it can't be built upon for that reason also, because it's at least fifty foot is a pipeline easement.
That makes more sense, pipeline. Thanks, that answers the question.
Any other questions?
Well, let's see if we can develop some consensus. I can start it off. I enthusiastically support Staff moving forward. I think it's great that MMI is willing to expand their footprint in Celine. That's obviously our goal. We always want to see our businesses, both large and small businesses of a commercial enterprise...
commercial enterprises and industrial, grow and thrive in this community, and if we can help them out by selling some property that is of no real value to us, you know, I think it's a win-win. So I'm interested in hearing what my colleagues think. Start it off, Mr. Gierbach?
Sure, no, I'm fine. Put it back on property tax rolls and we'll get some more income off it.
Okay, Mr. Rhodes?
I fully support entering a negotiation with MMI on this property.
Okay. Ms. Tahar?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Roth?
I'm in support.
Very good. Ms. Dillon?
I'm in support.
Okay. Do you feel like you have sufficient direction then?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Hopefully, we'll have something tangible to report in the very near future. Thank you all. Last, but certainly not least, on the agenda this evening, and there's also, I believe, a corresponding memo from Dickinson Wright on this, actually dated today, April 1, Railroad cars. Do you want to kick this one off?
Sure. And chief, I kind of asked the chief to address this, but yes, I mean, obviously, we've, the last has been there now for maybe three weeks, a month, the rail cars, and so, of course, a lot of questions and comments, and so we just wanted to bring this, you know, to council and so the public could know that unfortunately, there's not a lot we can do. But again, that's why, part of the reason for the attorney's opinion, but also, I don't, chief has had some discussions with folks at Ann Arbor Railroad as well.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, over the weekend, Chris Shonk texted me and let me know that somebody on Facebook had actually sent him the question about what's going to be done with those rail cars. And I had sent a memo to Mr. Campbell, and I talked to a gentleman by the name of John Vance, and his title is Train Master. I'm not exactly sure what that means, but it sounds pretty important, over at the Ann Arbor Railroad. And he says all the cars are empty that are sitting there. They have not been cleaned, so there is, like, there could be vapor or something like that in there, but as far as quantity, there's nothing in there. He says they are going to be parked there in what he termed as a deep storage, which means they're going to be there for a long period of time. And I asked him if there were any, you know, qualifiers, anything, is there a time limit of any kind? And he says, "No, it's, you know, it's Ann Arbor Railroad property, and they can use that for storage from now until whenever." And so I told him about the concerns that our citizens are having about those vehicles or those cars being parked there, and he said he would see what he could do to have those cars pulled a little bit further to the east so they're at least not visible from Maple Road, but that has not occurred as of yet, but he said he will try to get that done. But as far as any type of enforcement or forcing them to move them, we have no authority whatsoever to do that.
Right. Okay. Any comments, questions? Mr. Rhodes?
I think the economics might eventually force them to do something with that because there's several million dollars' worth of equipment sitting there.
Anything further? Ms. Tahar?
I just wanted to say, I appreciate the fact that we turned to the city attorney for clarification of what we could or could not do. Not necessarily the answer we would have liked to have, but it's good to have that clarification.
Sure. Anything further? Chief? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything further from you?
Well, I'm just going to add, and unfortunately, in another community I was in previously, we had similar discussions slash battles, so, but yeah, I wanted to make sure that so everybody knew that we've done what we can do to this point, so.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. If there's nothing further, oh, yes, Mr. Rhodes?
My apologies there, Mayor Marl. I should have brought this up earlier, but I wanted to mention that I participated in MML Economic Development and Land Use Committee this morning up in Lansing. We developed positions on 11 bills that are working their way through either the House or the Senate. Some in support, some opposed to, and then we had discussions on three items that have not yet generated any new bills, but they're in that preliminary process. So the agenda that I had with me, I marked all up with notes, but I did take another one and cleaned it up and just circled whether we supported or opposed, so if there are people here who would like that, actually, I'll give that...
Do you want to provide it to clerk, and she can make copies and put them in everyone's mailboxes?
Yeah, and then if any of y'all have questions or concerns about the positions we took, if you wanted to contact me, I could give you more explanation about why we did what we did.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Appreciate your service on that subcommittee. Anything further? No, then we'll proceed to the second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and may comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? Any other business to come before the city council this evening? Well, please note our upcoming work meetings and regular meetings, as well as a special meeting on the 27th of this month. We already excused the absence of Councilwoman Cybok Koenig, so we will dispense with that. And at this time, the chair would seek a motion to adjourn this regular city council meeting at 9:05 p.m.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gierbach. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Dillon. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.